We were still looking around.
Unfortunately, there are places in the lot that...
And then it's like starting throwing them out again.
I haven't heard anything. Depending on the weather and...
That one is quiet and nice. I know, and it's so annoying.
He does a good job.
We will let Jim come in, because Val's gonna be talking.
Val and all your friends.
You gave up your card. You gave your card to him.
Yeah.
That's why my mail...
John, go on. Here we go. Yeah, Sean's talking. It's six o'clock, so I think we'll call the order of the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A couple things. We're going to... We have a great crowd, and one of the things I want to make sure everyone understands, this is a workshop, so nothing can be voted on or anything else. This is for us to hear, to plan for council meetings in the future, to put agendas together and those type of things. So we can comment, we can talk, but we cannot vote or take action upon anything. So anything we're discussing or hearing about is for future council meetings and that stuff. So with that in play, we're gonna start the public comment. I assume we can go into discussion, the new business, those type of things. If anybody wants to talk during the public comment, it'd be great if you could state your name and your address before we get started. So does anybody want to start on the public comment? Please, just come up to the microphone, state your name and your address.
I'm Gary Brinkley. I live down in Glendale Park Drive, 920. I would just ask that you give some credence to allowing some break on the water situation due to the winter in the bed and the water everyone's running. Not just for myself, but others that are on fixed income. They all know there's gonna be some issues there too. Just to make you aware of that. I'm sure you're all aware of the hurt. Depends what part of town you're in. Neighbors, friends, whatever.
Thank you, Gary. Please.
My name is Judy Van Raiden, and I live at 701 West Avenue Southeast. And I'm here for the same issue. We have several neighbors in our neighborhood that are froze up right now. And we live kind of in the middle of them. And I think there's four right now. And we also have our rental property, and we've been running our water 24/7 for the last three weeks to try to avoid a huge problem. So if you would give some consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
My name is Clarence Stewart Wiggins. I should explain that some of you that I know here know me as Clarence. Others know me as Stewart. I live at 321 Sixth Street Southwest.
Which one of those is the alias? Which one of those is the alias? Clarence or Stewart?
My mother decided when I was born on a farm in West Fork Township. I lived with my grandparents. My grandfather's name was Clarence Herman. My dad's name was Clarence Edman. My name was Clarence Stewart. So they decided I have too many Clarencees, so.
I can relate to that.
Anyway, 321 Sixth Street Southwest. I was one of the unfortunate that my water service froze up. I was out of water for one day. I was fortunate. I was able to contact Mort's Incorporated over to Kohler, and they came over the next day. This was on... Of course, it was on Friday when I was out of water. They came over Saturday and fixed me up. I'm fortunate. They did a good job. It was an expensive job, but I'm back in business. And if I can share any information or anything with any of you, feel free to ask me. Probably that's all I had to say at the time.
Do you have... Go ahead, Dick. I'm just gonna ask what method they used to open the lot and get the water going.
Mort's Incorporated have then hooked my water service, my water meter, and they inserted a small tube into the copper service pipe. And then they injected high-pressure water in that tube. And eventually it broke up and freed the ice. I think they... Mine was a fairly long water service, 130 feet, which is, I think, maybe somewhat longer than normal. And it took two, two and a half hours to do. It did the job, and I'm well satisfied with their work and doing the work.
Had you been running your water before that froze?
No, I hadn't been.
Have you been running it afterwards?
I've been running it since then.
And if you could explain to us how you're doing that? Are you... How much water are you running? I've had a lot of people questioning letting drips, just doing a drip, those type of things. How are you running it?
Somewhat more than a drip.
Okay.
Size of my small finger.
Okay.
A pencil size almost. And I've checked the temperature several times.
Okay.
When I... Shortly after it was... After the ice was out, I checked it. I think it was about 44 degrees at that time.
Okay.
I've checked it two or three times since then, and it's running 47 to 48 degrees.
Okay. And a couple more questions?
Yes.
How many faucets are you letting run?
Just one.
Great. And is it before the water conditioner or after the water conditioner? If you have a water conditioner?
It should be after the water.
After the water conditioner, okay. Do you have any way of running it before the water conditioner?
Yes, I think... Yes, I think...
You might have that capability?
Yeah.
I just was curious. I'm trying to understand this myself, and so I've had numerous questions about how people are doing that. Yes, ma'am?
We're also running ours about the size of a good-sized pencil.
Great.
And the lowest our water temperature was was 37.
Okay.
And that Mort's had recommended to be a bigger size.
Bigger size.
I've been running the one downstairs, and that's all he had told me to do. And actually Doug had told me to do it the night I went home, and it was froze after I left the meeting. I have one more question for you, Stuart. Do you happen to know our neighbor's to the north of me?
Yes.
He came over the other night, and I know they've been out for about a week.
Is that right?
Yeah, do you know...
There was more of that.
Yeah, do you know if they... Obviously, then you haven't talked... They had...
No, I haven't.
Well, okay. Because I know they were going to your house when I was going outside with one of the dogs. And I know they've been out for a week unless they got it on in the last day or two.
No idea. I'll be there.
Okay. Thank you. Because of you, I got mine on that day.
The system that Mort's use, they have to hook up to another water source. Since I didn't have water, they hooked it up to a neighbor, the Schuler next door, and used his water to help fill my service.
Thank you. Anyone else? Public comment. Dan, would you like to?
About water?
Yes.
Yeah.
We're asking, state your name and your address.
Dan Rota Meyer, 708 First Avenue Southeast.
And if you could speak into that mic.
We just recently, last Friday, had our water turned back on. We've been without water for two days. It was a hardship. We were able to make alternate supplies, bring in gallon water so that we could flush the toilet such as that by drinking water. We had to, but it was not a good time.
Did he come back on his own? Did he do something?
Paul Herman brought... Had bought a hot water jetter that he would feed in there. The water was heated to 140 to 150 degrees. And he just kept working it in, working it in, and after about an hour, no, about two and a half hours, he was finally able to get down with the water. Without that, it would be springtime, I'm sure of it. There were no broken water pipes, which are less likely.
Anybody else have any questions for Dan? You planning to continue to run water then?
Yes. We installed another valve to run off of our hard water, so then he had the soft water. So we got that running now too. Today I measured the temperature. It's like 42 degrees. So the next few days, I'm not sure.
Now, do you run yours 24 hours a day?
Yes.
Okay. I need to... Because I just have been running mine from like 6:00 to 6:00. Yes, but... That's something good for all of us to know.
Make sure to take the temperature.
Yeah, okay.
Counting about temperature and frequency of running. Mort likely has reported a couple of times today. First time I think he said 39 degrees. This is on 12th Avenue Northeast. 39 degrees for the water since then. Lately it's been 37.
Who's what?
And they have been running their water only at night. They're almost during the day, and they're using water, so they're always concerned about it. And noticed the difference in the flow of the water, but at night they're getting a lot of impasses. A friend of mine from CLW called me yesterday. They've been without water for about seven days now. And so yesterday, yesterday to help them out, we filled up all of our gallon jugs we had. Took our bottled water up to hand, but it only took for six gallons of water. It took about 10 to 15 minutes to fill those up. So I mean, it's been served a lot, but not very...
Okay.
Brother-in-law in Independence and a couple others say that in their cities, they take the last couple months of water bills and average them out so that they are not charged for this trickle-down. Anyway, we're glad and blessed to be back on. And Brooke, thank you for the meaningful work that you've done to open up the Wellness Center, to give showers.
That's something I would like to maybe repeat to everyone, just kind of the concept of what I've taken, and maybe Ron and Doug could speak to it. I tried to call as many people as I was aware of who were without water. And one of the things that I want to make sure that city officials, that our empathy for the water being without water, it's a terrible feeling.
It's rough.
It's the worst thing to possible be is to be without water.
I'd rather be without heat. I'd rather be without water than electricity.
So the part is, is being responsible for your own safety is the key thing. And so if people are out there without water trying to get through this, they need to make us aware of it as a community. As a city, in the city government, there's certain things we can and can't do. But as a community, we can do a whole lot. And I think some of the neighbors that you are giving me examples of, so many people have come together.
Our neighbors and friends.
It's just been a phenomenal thing. And that's the part that we should be so proud of in our community. But I do want to point out that some other communities got it a lot worse. And that's been hard for our services, for the plumbers and Furman and those type of things, because they're being pulled out of our community because we haven't been hit so hard as some of the other communities. So we aren't the only ones, and that's been the problem is, is a few of the people I called, they were on waiting lists and not knowing when they would get someone over there. And the problem is of the crapshoot of it's buyer beware. There's no secret. I think that's why you're asking, how did they get it open? People have been using different things, and in a free enterprise, free market, they're having to pay for that trial, and no one's going to guarantee...
It's not the way to go.
Yeah, yeah. And the welding thing, it does put a lot of people in jeopardy. And I think that example came out. But the point of it is, is there is no easy way for a city to recommend someone to come do it and realizing that you're flipping the bill. And I think, Val, you were without it, and you haven't gotten your bill. And that's the problem, is there's no way to set that price. And so I'm real sorry for the people who are without water. Please be diligent and don't put your family in harm's way. If you need water and that type of stuff, you can call me personally, 641-456-8531. There's lots of community service of people stepping up and saying, we'll help. And I think CLW was a good example of saying, hey, we've got washers and dryers. I mean, we don't...
And showers.
And showers. I mean, there's... The Wellness Center has said, hey, people should not be putting themselves at risk or, you know, not bathing or hygiene and those type of things. They need to take care of themselves.
You have to, that you just didn't want to use... Didn't want to cook even because you might make something dirty.
Right.
And having to haul everything out to be washed and bring it back.
There's only so much you can put into a microwave.
Yeah. So anyway, the point of it is, is I'm so sorry for the people who are still without water. It is a terrible situation, and I'm so sorry to have anybody go through this. And one of the concerns, I think we talked about it, is the frost may have gone deeper for people without it, and it's still not over with. I've heard that maybe mid-March before there's a break. And if you're going to wait, you may be without it, and you still may have be in jeopardy of your pipes freezing that haven't froze before. There are some people that aren't running their water because they buried their lines deeper. They're not exposing it, and that's great. It's like flooding a few years back. Some people don't have to put a sun pump in their basement. Some people don't want to do the water. But it is putting people in jeopardy by not running your water, but there is a cost of doing that. And that's the concern that we all have. And I think that's what is on our agenda to talk about here. And I think that's the first thing on our new business, that I'll turn this over to Ron, and we'll get through this from a workshop. But the point of it is, is if you don't want to run your water, that's not a problem. But you do take a risk for an unknown how long you'll be without freezing. And one of the concerns I have is if your pipes freeze, it could... Depending on where you're at on our mains, it could... That frost could go back into the main and put other people in jeopardy. So I'm not saying we're saying you have to run water. Every citizen needs to run their water. It's a risk-type deal, but it does have ramifications for your neighbors and for long-term. You know, you may not be able to get... You know, we don't know how bad or where it might freeze and that stuff. So it is a gamble that everyone takes. And from the main... We own the mains, and the property owner owns the hookup back from off that main. But boy, I don't know how to advise people, but... And we'll talk about that in our new business. I think on some of the estimates we're trying to do, what the cost of that and that kind of stuff. I've been trying to keep an eye on it. Does anybody else want to do public comment or any other questions? Does anybody up here have questions for Dick?
I know that I came in here a few minutes ago, but did you guys talk about water allowance for those?
We're not... We're in public comment now, so if you want to just kind of give your things and that, you can come up to the... Go up to my... State your name, address, and just kind of give us your thoughts.
Lou Rota Meyer in 708 First Avenue Southeast Hampton. Some of the towns that I've been watching are giving a water allowance, and they're been doing the average for the last 11 months. And then those people are getting billed for their average. And anything over above is like null and void. They're just doing a water allowance for everybody. Even those people who have helped the others out, they ran extra water for showers and laundry, provided their homes to be...
Okay.
So they're gonna be getting a water allowance as well for helping us out.
Okay.
So that's what some of the other towns around here are doing.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions for Lou? I think before we open up and go into the agenda, one of the things I would like to do... Is there anybody else that wants to speak? Oh, sorry. Sorry, let's get through the public comment.
I saw a simple question from my council lady there.
Okay. If you give us your... Step up, name and address, just so we have for records.
Rich, you're back. 621 Third Avenue, Southwest Hampton, the first. I wanted to ask you, did your water freeze up then? Okay, so you've been taking the chance of 6:00 to 6:00 of not running it. That's...
Yeah, so I need to run it.
Run a temperature check now and then?
I need to... I'd be honest with you, this is so new. I mean, I've never...
New to everybody.
New to everybody, so...
I hadn't had one, I mean, 30 years ago.
So I will be running it.
Yeah.
All day. I will.
Because it is expensive, it's all...
Thank you.
And that scares me.
Yeah. Well, and it was just... I mean, you don't think about it until you're without water. I mean, it's something as simple as watering the dogs, so anyway.
I was parleting from my neighbors, and that got to be quite the hassle. Taking them fast showers over there.
Thank you.
It does feel like a fast imposition to have to go to your neighbors.
We have one more public comment?
Hi, I'm Steve Everman, 12 Third Avenue Northeast. When I first started hearing about this, it said, check your temperature of your water. And if it's between 42 and 45, I measured mine that day. It was 40. And since then, it's gone down as low as 36. This morning it was 38. This noon it was 38. And in fact, it's been running right at 38. So these people that are at 40, I don't know where they're getting their water from, but I wish I might would come out near that one. And I started running a trickle and came down and talked to City Hall. And they said, oh, it should be at least the size of a pencil. I mean, you're pinky. So I cranked it up to that, and I measured it, and it's taking... It's filling... It's coming out at a rate of right about a gallon a minute. So I penciled this out, and it's like 1,440 gallons per day and somewhere around 43,000 gallons per month. And I guess, I know you guys are in a difficult situation, but other towns are doing it. And I'm really pleading, hoping that you will allow us something off of this water bill that we're gonna be having this month, and it sounds like part of next month as well.
Are you just running one faucet?
Yes, one.
I see. We're... I'm running water also, and mine's only doing 100 gallons a day. And we're running a full stream.
Right. What's your water coming out at, though?
About 38.
38?
I say that seems to be an awful lot. Mine's only 100 gallons a day, in an entire day.
Well, this is a stream that, like you said, they said that a pencil... It's a small pencil that I'm running, but it'll fill up a 32-ounce cup in 15 seconds, so I figured that was a gallon in a minute, so. I mean, if I could turn it down and be assured that I'm not gonna freeze, I don't want to freeze up. I know what...
And you know what? I just want to tell you, the pencil stream, there's no guarantee that that's gonna keep it. I mean, I'm just trying to... The reality of it is, is even though we're saying that, the city is not saying that's going to keep you from freezing. We cannot be liable for your cost if that were to happen. We're just trying to give you some ideas.
Right.
But by no means is this... Are we accepting responsibility by saying that? I just... I mean, that's a lot... I've had that from some people saying, oh, it is better not freeze. It's like, I can't guarantee... These are acts of nature. We're trying to give you ideas to help, but by no means... I mean, this is just a very tough situation we're in. And we're not the only community within that. We're just trying to prevent, you know, future stuff. But I don't know the mathematics for, you know, two trains leaving at the same time at different things, how much the algebraic for how much gallons. We've been trying to do estimates on that too, so, of how much and that stuff. And I know Ron wants to talk about that, of different communities, how they've calculated and that stuff, so.
Part of what I came for too was to see if anybody had been running a stream and did freeze up while it was running. And anybody... Okay. I was just curious. I'm trying to pick up information as well as you are.
Yeah, and I think that's what Dick was saying, that one address, the temperature's dropping. I mean, you said it was at 36, 37. It's like, okay, when it hits 32, I think what science I do know...
Wide open.
That it's gonna be a problem if it hits a 32. So, and I don't know what's causing it or how to prevent it or what to do if it keeps dropping on you. What is the next thing? And I haven't heard that one yet. I mean, is there anything, if your temperature keeps dropping, other than to open up the stream more? I guess that's... And if it doesn't reduce it, that may be coming from our mains at that temperature. Now it's a concern of, okay, where's it going? And I would say, call us. Doug, do you feel we should... If they're at 34, 35, if we know, then we might be able to at least know the general area of, boy, we could have a problem.
Wouldn't hurt.
Wouldn't hurt. So if you call us, if it's dropping at 35... What do you think, Doug? What would you like as a message to the community? If it's at this degrees?
I think if we're hitting at 35, give us a call.
Give us a call.
We'll just know what area is going on. And it's gonna vary throughout town because of the different elevations and depths of what the water main actually is. You know, you have some that were put in back World War I era. Some of that was hand dug in. That might only be four foot deep, and that's gonna be colder water. If you're, you know, five foot, six foot deep, we did have a break, or not a break, but we had some on excavation today. Frost was down six foot, so.
So as a message going out with the media being here, if it's at 35, if your temperature's at 35 and it's still running, give us a call here at City Hall so we can make note of it. And maybe there might be something. At least we know what area of the town and that type of stuff. So thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Just one more real quick. I know in Sheffield, and maybe we've done this, and my dog ate it, but they've put out a brochure or a little thing on everybody's door with these facts. I don't know if that would... You know, I know it'd be costly, but that might be a good idea because some people don't listen. Or have you done that, Doug? And if you have, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. We didn't go door-to-door, but we did put a few hundred of those out in all the businesses in town. Not every single business, but for the most part, we tried to hit the, you know, the Harleys, the gas heating establishments, the gas stations, let's see, hardware store. I mean, we did try to put a whole bunch of liars out, but we have that front door. I don't know. But we put a lot of them out.
And I'm sure you have... You know, I just know with my daughter, she got one, and they didn't really understand, like all of us, didn't understand the significance of that. And then it happened to me, and now she, you know, she gets it.
We don't do any envelope mailing, do we? Everything we have is postcard mailing, so we can't insert anything. That's the other problem. The only people that are doing inserts, or maybe the banks or something like that, when they're doing their statements, mailing statements, could maybe slap something in. We missed the... Well, maybe at the first of the month, if we ask the three banks. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Well, as far as mailing goes, we do have a thing that Roseanne come up with on the water bill that gets sent out from City Hall. It does say, check your water temperature, I believe, so if she's nowhere.
That's on the postcard?
So that'd be on the...
Okay, so that's on the postcard. Okay.
Probably there aren't many people that actually read that.
Right. They just look at the amount and that stuff. I mean, the point of it is, is getting the information out. I've heard so many people saying, I didn't know that. And of course, we've tried to get it out, but yet in the same situation, you know, Facebook... That's where social media and our neighbors and getting the communities and the churches and everything else to basically program is to get people educated into how to prevent it. Because what a pain to have it frozen. Prevention is better than... Prevention is better than the freeze.
Well, I know, I was screaming on Facebook, people, "There's a water pipe, frost warning."
And that's where I got a lot of my information from.
Dick, you got some comments?
Just a question as to whether or not we've made any suggestion of water conservation form of, some of the folks obviously have some gallon jugs around now, but that water that's trickling down the drain now, maybe you're saving the water for pet use, use with your pets, use in stools, if the jugs are clean, use for cooking. I mean, it's, it's only a fraction of what's going down the drain, but it's a fraction.
That's a good point, because that is, one of the things that I was asking when I was calling people without water is like, everyone had made arrangements, but I was wondering, oh, wow, do I have a bunch of buckets? I could even gallon milk jugs, I could, that are clean, sterile, that I could go out to give people water, to distribute water in a fast way. Now that I've been in town, I don't have any now, and so I've been trying to save, you know, any water jugs and that stuff, in case someone did need to transport water. That's a good point, is using that water internally, making sure.
When a big storm came through, we were potentially in danger of losing our electricity. You know, my wife filled up some buckets out in the garage, and the dogs have been drinking that water for a week now, so. That's a way to save a little.
Any other questions for Steve? Thank you. Anyone else have any comments or anything else?
One quick question before you're done.
Yes, sir.
Because I don't know if anybody else has been wondering, but I've been wondering the same thing. When I've been taking the temperature of my water, the faucet's running full blast, and I guess, am I getting an accurate reading, or am I just getting the reading of what's in the main? Because it's got to travel from the main through my, you know, through my house, and I've been using the faucet, which is, of course, is not, does not go through the water softener, which is in the kitchen, which probably would be the closest, closest one to, you know, down there. And I've also gone downstairs, and I have a faucet that's right there by the meter, ran the water, ran it in a bucket a little bit, and then took the temperature, and it's right in that forty, between forty and forty-five range. You know, how long, I mean, you know, if you don't run it, how long does it take for that to possibly go and change temperature and then freeze? You know? I guess those are the questions. So I've been basically letting my water run, not a pencil stream, but a stream, at least at nighttime and when we're not at home, and taking, and keep taking the temperature, and it stays about the same, except there was one night when it dropped to forty. My rental house next door, I told them to run it, because I can't be there to go, and I'm not assured that they're going to take the temperature of it. I don't want to spend the money going out to go and, you know, and have it.
Yeah, I, I think that's the key thing, is rental owners, to make sure that, you know, it may be a hardship for their renter, but for the rental owner to be responsible for those water pipes. And the rental, in their renter, rental codes, if they, pipes are frozen, that is part of our, that they have to have, be insured that they have proper water supplies under our ordinances. And that would be a problem, that you could get in trouble with your tenant by not supplying them with adequate water. So I think people need to be aware of that, who are renter, rental owners, that they are responsible, that they have water, is part of our ordinance. So if, if we have tenants who don't have water, that could be an issue right there off the bat, so.
I just told them not to worry about it.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, you don't, yeah, because you're going to be responsible for those pipes if they break, not the, not the rentee. And a lot of people aren't aware of that. One more public comment?
Yeah, I wondered the comment, do you feel that you're running long enough to take the water that's warm inside the house, outside?
But my question is, is am I running it too long when I'm trying to get the temperature? Am I getting just the water from the main?
That's good enough, yes, same thing is coming out, so. I had a question to ask.
If you mind, if you wouldn't mind, one of the things I think what we're going to do tonight, just to kind of establish this, we have enough people here and that stuff. I'd like to do one, especially when we get into the session of our workshop. If you have questions and that stuff, raise your hand. I'll, I think we will take the time to let you comment on anything we're discussing. But I do want to have a record of it. We take minutes off of it, we want to make sure that, you know, in an orderly fashion, so we don't have a lot of cross-talk and that stuff. So please, come up to the mic, ask Doug your question, so that way we can make sure it's in the media, it's recorded, so if we need to get, you know, medias here, so. So step up, ask your question, and Doug, and, because it's, a lot of people in our community are wanting to know answers, so, it'd be for all of us.
Realize that you had mains broken, and there was down by Jim Hilton, which, you know, that water would continue to the south, to the main? See, I, I just live north of it a little bit, so I wasn't affected. But would these people, when you repaired that main, would they be affected with their lines being frozen then?
Because of the break?
Yeah.
No.
But drains from it then, or something, or?
No, no.
Fix that soon?
Well, the, well, the water line is, the water main break really wouldn't have anything to do with, with the, with frozen lines or individual service lines. And honestly, if, if people can picture, you know how mom and dad tell you, "Don't walk on the river. Don't walk on the ice above the river." The reason they're telling you that is because the water's flowing underneath, and there's always weak spots. And once, if the water stays flowing, and you can ask most plumbers this, or if anyone's ever tried to put a sweat joint together, and they had a little drip of water, and they tried to do that sweat joint, they, they can't get that to go if they have just a little bit going there. We actually have a freeze machine that's designed to put CO2 on a copper up to a two-inch service. It will hit that CO2 there, but if there's water even just dripping out of that pipe, it, it, yeah, it can't get it frozen because it's, it's running. So, really, the best, the best thing we can tell people is, run that water. You know, we kind of set some criteria for temperature. It's not an exact science. The other thing that people need to be aware of is with this frost in the ground, not only can you freeze up, but the ground in the, because like the water main breaks, the earth is moving. Our ground is actually moving a lot right now, and it's going, and the, the earth in the frost, yeah, it's, it's going to move, and it's going to create potential issues, and it's, it's going to create issues clear into, you know, spring, until things get good and thawed out. We've been nervous this could end up causing some issues for our streets. Whenever you have this much frost, it's not good, it's not, not good.
My initial question was, I knew that you guys had at least six mains freeze that you had repaired.
No, not freeze, not freeze, break.
Or break.
Break, that's not, yeah, breaks are different than a freeze or frozen. Yes, age, weakness in the ground moving a little bit. So we've had no water mains break due to freezing.
Okay.
Yep.
You had at least six repaired?
Oh, we're up, I think we're up to close to nine now. Yep, since November.
Do you have any kind of record of how many people did have problems with their water, with the frost?
Yeah, yeah, I actually have a list.
I just want to know.
And really, this, well, this list is only as good as, as the people that actually called in, and I have. To date, I have about thirty-one on the list.
Thirty-one.
But a great number of these have already been thawed, and in one way or another.
That is, thirty-one people have called City Hall. We had cleared, as of Sunday, we had, you know, because you added another ten or so on that, I think, since then. The biggest problem we have is people report to us, but then don't call back when it's clean. So I've been trying to call, and I haven't gotten back on the phone to see how many are cleared. So I would ask also for the media, for the people who have called, if they're without water, number one, would they please call City Hall so they can, we know? Because that'll give us an idea of neighbors affected, that stuff. We would really like to know the people without water. And second, if it's cleared, call back to tell us it's cleared, so we don't have to go call to find out what your status is and that stuff. So I would really appreciate, as a call to the media, to make sure that people who are without water call the city and report it. And second of all, if they get back their water, they call and clear it back, so we have an idea of who's without water right now. And I, I, we really would prefer not to reveal, you know, this event. It's not for public information, who's without water, who's that? But the numbers and that stuff are the key thing, and for us as a city to make sure that they're okay and they're safe, is the other part.
It'll give you an idea of what you can do to continue with the billing or whatever.
The other good part about people notifying us is, the other thing that we've discussed in the office is, when we create this list, the nice thing will be is, if we have this good list, we keep that on file over the years. Whenever we start running into a future problem.
Correct.
We will be able to notify these people and say, "You might want to run a water because..."
Right, and you're susceptible to this in the past, so we kind of know which neighborhoods, you know, might be open to it and that type of stuff.
It's good data collection. It's unfortunate, but it's good data collection.
Any other public comments? So before we start, I'm going to turn this over to Ron, and we're going to go through this. If you want to make a comment, raise your hand, make sure I see you, and then you can put your hand back down. I'll kind of nod you, and then when we get to a part, then we'll call you up and go through this again. But we want to keep kind of this flowing. We can't take action on anything tonight, so keep that in mind. And also, once we get to some of the older business ideas, it'd be great if you wanted to stay and listen to some of the other topics, because you know what? Nothing's more exciting than city government, so please stay and listen in. So, we'll get started. If there's no more public comments, we close that. I'm going to turn it over to you, City Manager Ron Dunn.
Thank you. A lot of the information has been, already been covered. Some communities, obviously, we've had a lot of requests for some allowance on water bills. The city is recommending folks to, if their water temperature is falling below, you know, forty-five degrees, to, to run a stream of water to prevent their water line to freezing. And so, we've had people ask for some sort of allowance, an averaging of their water bill, if they're choosing to do that. Some communities are doing that, some aren't. It's just kind of all over the board. But the property owner is responsible for the, from the main to their house, and, but it's just basically up for discussion tonight, and, you know, if you want to do anything. I'm just going to open it up for questions, I guess, to, at this point.
I'll lead with some comments here. Most everyone here is wanting water relief, or I assume have had water problems and are bringing up an issue. I'm going to take the devil's advocate side just for a second, just to kind of get everybody's blood pressure going. For the people that aren't running their water, they are taking a gamble by not running it, but they're not incurring that cost. The question I have is for the people who are running their water and want to ensure that they don't have these plumbing bills. The other taxpayers will be making up that difference. And by, as a city government, we can either say, yes, we can pay for, you know, these adjustments, and Ron, you've come up with some ideas. We have the information from your last year's at this time, to say, okay, at this time last year, you ran this. Now, do you have more children, do you bathe more, whatever? You know, we can only say what you've run for the last three months or this year last time. However, who's going to make up that difference? Because if some reason, the plumber or whoever put that pipe in, did something different to make it more susceptible to freezing. So do the other city people pay for that difference? Or do we put a fund together that says, hey, let's donate, and discretionary donate on your next water bill for the people, you know, to put an extra ten dollars in, to say, hey, to help offset that cost, and try to do a fundraiser for a discriminate, discretionary donation to offset some of the people who have run their water as compared to do it as a tax, meaning anybody who wants it, we're going to do it. And that means the other people will be funding that cost. So I just throw that out, that, you know, we have the power to say, yes, we can forgive everybody's water thing, or do we make it discretionary, a donation or a donation fund for the people who have been running, who apply and those type of things. Those are, I'll start with that comment.
That's how I'd, I'd like to say to that, is, the people that aren't running the water, you know, like I was trying to point out before, and I'll use myself as an example, I'm very ignorant to this whole situation. And that's why I think it's so important to educate, you know, which we are doing a great job. Doug, by the way, thank you very much for everything you have done also. I think it's important that, you know, if they're choosing not to run their water, we're doing everything we can to educate everybody in town, and that, you know, like you said, that's a risk that they're taking. You know, we have different situations happen all the time. We've had flooding in different areas, now we're having, you know, the water frozen in different areas. My opinion is, I, I do think that we need to consider, I'm not saying we should do anything, but I think we need to consider some type of allowance instead of a fundraiser. I, I think that is just, but the, and, and I understand where you're coming, you know, you're devil's advocate, and then we need also just, you know, remember that, because, and the people that have to pay it with their taxes also have to think, the next time, it could be them, and something different could happen in their area. And then those of us that were helped out, need to remember instead of, you know, being upset that, that we have to step forward and help them also.
Anyone else?
I keep thinking about a time about a year ago, when I went on vacation, and we were out camping, and my toilet failed, and I paid an extra three hundred bucks. I'm not complaining, it was my bill, but I wasn't home because then it just took off. So, I think that if we go ahead and just make an allowance, take, take, take the numbers for my year, and anything above that, forgive it. I realize that some people are fortunate enough not to have that problem, which I haven't had yet. But that don't mean I can go home tonight and have a problem.
Ron, you kind of did a quick pencil when I asked you earlier, kind of using these, how much water and that type of stuff? What kind of numbers are we talking here for this, I mean, these are purely, you just, you know, is it X amount of thousand gallons, or is it a hundred gallons of that? You know, what would those costs really be?
I had read an article in the City Globe, and that the city engineer, Mark Ram, was estimating it was costing the citizens of Mason City, if they run their water in a pencil stream, would be two dollars and fifty cents a day, or something. So I called him to find out, they have different rates than we do, so we can't go by dollar amount, but I wanted to know what he was using for a per gallon, you know, and how many gallons is it using in a twenty-four hour period? And his, his estimate was four hundred and thirty-two gallons in a twenty-four hour period, running a pencil stream. He said that's not scientific, it's just his own, you know, he ran a pencil stream at home and, and measured some, and timed it, and did the math, and, but he's an engineer, so I'm trusting him more than me.
And he said four thirty-two?
Four hundred and thirty-two, in a twenty-four hour period.
In a twenty-four hour period.
So, if, if someone did that in Hampton, you know, we tried to run some rough numbers this afternoon, and, and on an average water bill, let's say an average is sixty-two hundred gallons in a month, your typical bill would be with water and sewer and everything landfill, about seventy-two dollars. If you ran a pencil stream twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, for thirty days, it would add fifty-five to sixty dollars to your bill. That's a rough estimate, where, you know, it's just all in ballpark, but.
And you're estimating that four hundred and thirty-two gallons?
That's what we used.
That's the figure you're using?
That's what we used, yeah. Of course, and, and you know, we don't, Steve's indicating a lot more, she's indicating less, so I don't know. It's tough to estimate.
But at least we're using, you know, like you said, an uninterested party out of Hampton, saying, okay, that's what we're using in Mason City is four thirty-two, which is kind of, at least that gives us some kind of basis, and if we use that number, then we can calculate back.
So what would be the total estimate if we gave everyone a break of the sixty-five dollars a month? How much is on, how many water meters do we have?
Well, I think, what I would recommend, if the council wants to do some allowance for those running their water, we would have a sign-up procedure where they, we wouldn't just do it for everybody. People would have to contact City Hall, say, "I've been running my water." And then, when we read meter, we verify that excessive usage, and then those people would get the adjustment, not everybody.
And I guess that's where I would want to see some kind of, for some of the people, you know, not everybody's running it, and not everybody should benefit at everyone's expense in the community. So I think them applying in some way would, would have to be, I, it would be my opinion, of course, the council is up to them, but some kind of application process for help. And second of all, verification. process for help. And second of all, verification that, you know, that last year at this time, that they really are verifying that it is not a way to make sixty dollars come off their bill or whatever, that something come up on that. Would be one idea of doing it. Of course, no action can be taken tonight. However, we've got to come up with something to put on the agenda for coming months, because I know a lot of people are very concerned about running this water. And I think that was one of the comments, if you're on a fixed income, you know, that the impact of the city saying, hey, you know, and you can't gamble that kind of plumbing bill for sixty-dollar offset, it'd be better to run the sixty dollars than to have a plumbing rate of going through the hardship of having it frozen.
Steve brought up a good point, where if your toilet in your basement, which you don't go down there much, and you don't use it much, but you used it one day, and then all of a sudden it started running, and it ran and ran and ran for a month, and used water and you didn't realize it, you'd have to pay for that water, because our policy is that if, if water runs through your meter, you have to pay for it. That's the policy. And we, we do not vary, waiver from that. And so, situation like that, this, this would be unique in that it's an act of God, and it happens every thirty years. But, you know, if you do end up doing some sort of an averaging and allowance for excess usage, keep in mind that you might get a complaint later from someone who, you know, had something happen and a bunch of meter, water ran through their meter.
The precedent is very, we need to be very careful of the precedent of that.
It's different, but it's, it's still, there's somewhat of a connection.
And by no means, again, as a community, it's a terrible situation. I mean, I, anybody who's having to run their water to prevent this thing, there will be expenses that you hadn't planned on, and I'm very sorry. And again, if you're a tenant and a renter, then the question is, is who should be offsetting it? That the, who's really at risk? The landlord is the one who's at risk for having to pay the, you know, the plumbing and that stuff. So that might be something, if you're a renter without water or running that water, that might be something you might want to talk to your tenant. The chief brought that up, and him being a landlord, I mean, it's like, wow, he wants his tenants to do that, so he doesn't have to bill. We have a comment.
Yeah, maybe just a clarification to Ron's statement about that the water goes through your meter, you pay for it. There have been exceptions made in the past. It's been a few years ago.
Okay.
Of course, some work was done, and the homeowner was allowed to water the grass seed that the city had put back.
Oh, gotcha. Right. Allowance made beforehand. Yeah, that's a great one. Beforehand, which I think from that, if we're asking that, you know, to keep the mains from freezing, Doug and I talked about that. It was, if you're at the end of a main, and you're the last house on that main, it might be to all of our advantages that you run your water. And those are things that I would like to negotiate that upfront with the landlord and that stuff as compared to after the fact. So thank you for that, that point, clarification. Other comments from the council? Dick?
The approach that we seem to be talking a lot about is making some adjustment for overreach. Is there any benefit in your mind, Ron, to looking at a three-year average of use for, is it more work than it's worth? Is there any benefit to look, not just at you, but a three-year, to establish what that mark is?
Well, I, I guess I would look for input from, from my staff on, I don't want to cause a, a lot of work for staff. And so I had a short conversation with Roseanne, who is really gonna be an asset. If you choose to do something, I don't want to make a ton of work for them. But she, you know, I think that there are ways to do some averages to get a good basis, you know. And I'd want to talk to them and come, you know, if the consensus tonight is, we want to do something. Well, then I work with, with Roseanne and Doug, and we come up with a proposal on what would be something that is sensible and doesn't cause a lot of work for staff and is fair. But, you know, whether it's three years or two years or, you know, something like that.
With that, I'd say I want to do something and move on.
Okay.
The last thing I would just like to say, and one point I was trying to make now, because I was very clear, is those that are helping their neighbors and running extra water, because, you know, and I even made the comment to Mortz when they came, and to my next door neighbor who's still, I, like I said, I don't know if he has water or not. I'm not home, you feel free to come over and use my outside spigot, you know? That's, that's where I'm, you know, we want to help each other. And I'm just trying to see both, like you are, we're trying to see both sides of this. But, you know, there are people that are not only running their water, but they're, they're helping their neighbor. And that's where, I just think that needs to be considered also.
Their neighbors, we need to make consideration.
Right.
Yeah, that's a good point, the, the people helping, because I know from you guys, you know, your neighbor was helping you quite extensively. That increased their water bill, even though, you know, on top of their stream that they're running to keep their pipes clean, so.
You might want to be careful with that, running an outside faucet, and that increases up the risk of use. Try to shut off right now.
Really?
Doug, is there any more expense involved with, to the, as far as us running pumps, et cetera? More for the city? Or does it, does it really amount to anything?
No, we're gonna have more electricity, we're gonna have more energy costs, we're making more water, because we're wasting more water. We're treating that water, because it's going to waste water plant. So there's, there's gonna be some expense to that. What that expense is, I don't know. We're talking about, if you take an individual faucet, like Ron had, trying to come up with a, a per gallon, it's really difficult, because in our field, we work with million gallons per day, which is half a million, you know, so it's very hard to determine some of that. But I think we're out on the right track, where I think we can come up with a sensible, fair amount, if, if you're looking at doing something. I think, you know, when we go to do our meter reading, for those people that are froze up, they won't have to worry as much, because when the water's not going through the meter, they're not gonna get billed for that. But when we go take the meter reading, and we find that they're using ten, twenty, thirty percent more than normal, we'll know that, because we have those records on the faucet.
Can I just ask a few questions? I also would like to reiterate, thank you for all the work your staff has done. They've been, I mean, it was brutal to be out working, and thank you so much. And also your positive attitude, thank you for that. The question I have is, for the last week, how often do we, as a city, as our city water plant, can we tell, can we see, last week, how much more water did we use as compared to the last three years at this time? Can we do it by day or by week, or is it by month? So we already know how much, as a city, we've used from all these people trickling and that stuff.
We'll, we'll have an idea. We actually give those numbers to the DNR every year or two, and we keep track on daily, you know, on dailies and weeklies where we're at.
We started pushing this, what, ten days ago or twelve, I mean, the word got out. Is there a way that you could give us the last seven days, how much more water we've used over the last, you know, give us an idea of, because I think as a community, we already know that there's been an increase. Also, the cost to the community is, is these sewer plants and that stuff are running more, so the cost to the community, whether we like to say it or not, some people aren't going to pay, but we know that there's been X amount more water used because of this.
Thursday night, I can give you a rough.
Yeah, because overall, some of the people aren't getting any water, and other people are using more. So it would be nice for us to have an idea as a community, because we're running through that, so.
We know people are doing it, because, but the other thing is too, we gotta keep mind on the wastewater side. We're obviously monitoring flows there, which is the wasted water. But we had that thaw, you know, for a couple of days.
Oh, gotcha.
So that, that actually increased us to where we were at three quarters of a million a day when an average.
Of water treatment.
Of water.
Treat wastewater.
And then, but I can also get you the water distribution and let you.
How big a pain is that? So if we had that by Thursday or sometime, just to give us an idea for a period, so we know as a council, what kind of numbers we're talking about.
I'll get it for you, and I can tell you what the record, where we were last year. I can tell you what the increase has been per day.
That'd be phenomenal. Yeah, so that way, from, as a community, we kind of know. And so now, as an individual, the Rota Myers, you know, were without water for a week, but now they're running more water, so this, you know, we'll be able to see that, so.
Yeah.
What are their comments? Jim, did you have a comment on any of this?
I agree.
Do we want to do something? And we want to do it as, okay, so just kind of getting an idea of how this might be worded. One is, is you're thinking that we want to, is everybody kind of thinking that they need to register? Is that mandatory, that they need to tell, notify? It's not gonna be, everybody's going to benefit. So we need to know about the people that are in distress, or have hardship, or use more water. The next question I would say is, when do you think we need to let people know? When do we need to make a decision? Does it need to be at this council meeting, or can we wait another council, which the next, I mean, we have a meeting, I'm trying to get a calendar here in front of me. This is the, that would be the twenty-seventh. The next meeting would be the, that we could make an action. I mean, we can't do anything, we can keep talking about it, but no actions can be taken.
March thirteenth.
March.
Is the next council meeting after.
Do we want to have it decided before the next water bill goes out?
Well, yeah.
That would be.
We just finished reading last week.
No, it's already been, so we've already, that was last week for the reading, so.
So there would have been a little bit on there.
There would have been a little bit on there.
So I, I've got a, the next, the next time we can make decisions would be the twenty-seventh, which would be this Thursday, or the thirteenth, or the twenty-seventh. And, and the point being is, is that if, if last week is when you read the water bill, there would only be two or three days of someone running it. Is that, am I two, a week off?
Yeah.
I'm a week off, aren't I? So I'm trying to say, is we hit this cold spot, this started, what, the seventh, February seventh?
February comes up on the eighth.
On the eighth. So February eighth is when kind of this started happening. We read water meters the fourteenth?
Last week.
Sometime last week. So we wouldn't have a lot, I mean, it shouldn't impacted, it should not have impacted anyone on this next water bill excessively, maybe a day or a couple of days.
Correct.
So the, the point is, it's, somebody's gonna get hit pretty hard at the, the April bill when they get, I mean, the end of March, they're gonna, that's when they're gonna see the lion's share of this, especially since we are predicting, or at least what I'm hearing from the meteorologist, that it may be another two weeks of this type of weather. I know all, next week is supposed to be cold, and everything I'm hearing is we might be planning till the tenth. We'll have another workshop meeting on the tenth. We'll have a special city council meeting on the tenth is the next time we come together as a workshop to discuss. Do we need to have something? Do we need to talk about the language for Ron to write it up, or can we hold and wait till the tenth? And I'm open to hear public comment on that, that they're not have to make, let's see how long we have to continue with this. But Ron, you have thoughts on that?
Well, the next reading, which the reading that they do in March will show excess usage in February. And then the reading that they show in April will show excess usage in March. So, but I don't know that it really matters. If you have a consensus, if you want to do something, then we would put something together, and that's what we would apply, then, would be for the March usage and April usage.
I just want to get the verbiage out and have an idea of the impact of this before we vote on something without knowing it. That's the only thing that is concerned.
Ron, can you have your proposal ready by the twenty-seventh, so we'd have something to look at, or do you feel more comfortable waiting?
I'll try. If I can, I'll come back and say, we're gonna have to do it at the March thirteenth.
But the, the point is, if we make action this Thursday, no one's really having to pay for the impact.
No, we can say whatever we want to start in what timeframe.
Yeah. Thoughts or comments on that, or anyone from the, from the thing? I mean, the point that concerns me is us making, you know, what happens if it's gonna continue on for another four weeks or something like that, the economic impact for the individuals.
It's going to continue on.
Right, I mean, that's the point. We, we know that, but what if, you know, we got snow in May last year. I mean, it's like, what if they're running it longer? I, I just am concerned about making sure that we publicize how to get in. I don't want people sitting around fretting, that I think, what I'm hearing is consensus that we, as a council, want to help people.
We're gonna do something.
We're gonna do something. But I just want to make sure it's appropriate, and, and we all have set the right expectations. The, okay, am I gonna get a sixty-dollar credit next month? Well, maybe not. We don't know. And I just want people to kind of do that. So what, what's the consensus of when we want to have something to talk about?
If we can get it done for the twenty-seventh, I think we should. The, the general information that we're hearing here is, we want to encourage everyone to participate in this program. If we have some fence setters out there, they're gonna decide not to run their water because they're not sure. I think our direction needs to encourage them to run their water.
I agree. So if there's something, at least some type of verbiage for Thursday night, if you could.
Okay, so, what I'm hearing, Jim, you're, I think the consensus for the press and that type of stuff, we want to continue to encourage people to run their water, that we're going to try to help the community. But also, we're putting a lot back on Ron to try to have verbiage to have, I mean, because the point of it is, is to get it on the agenda, we have to have it twenty-four hours in advance. That's, and today is the twenty-fourth. Ron's gotta work on that all day tomorrow, and we still have other things to try to get this to the press the morning of the twen- he's got tomorrow to work on it. And I don't want it to be inappropriate, and once it's voted on, on the twenty-seventh, I just soon have something kind of teed up, have comment on, and we all kind of have an idea. And the point of it is, is too much or too little, I want it to be right. That, that's all I want, is appropriate. And so I'm just warning us to putting a lot back on Ron, and I don't need a.
Wouldn't we be better to hold that till the thirteenth? It gives us a little more meaning to visit with it? As long as we're getting it out at this meeting, that we are willing to help.
Right, so people know that.
We haven't made a decision yet.
We still put on the agenda for the twenty-seventh.
Right.
And if you feel that we need to look at it again, you can table the issue until the thirteenth.
I, I just, to me, in these workshops, to me, those council meetings, I just want, you know, we have an idea to vote on it and talk about it, and not a lot of voting down and that kind of stuff. So my point is, is we'll leave it to our city manager to see if he can do it. But yet, realizing from the press, the economic impact is not, shouldn't be that much on this bill that they're receiving this next week. I mean, this week, while they're getting their thing, it's not gonna be reflected. For the people running their water, it's gonna be the next bill is where the impact's gonna be. And in the meantime, we could have measured kind of, okay, for this next week, as we continue with the publicity. I think Lou, you brought that up, is like getting the word out. People, we're encouraging you to run your water, you know, one faucet, a thing, I mean, trying to get the word out there. So now, as we continue to get the word out, we may even see more people on it, which would be more of an economic impact. And I just want to make sure we're getting the right statistics as a community on what this is gonna cost us, let alone, you know, the other things that we can talk about later, so. Any other thoughts on that? We'll turn it over to Ron, but, but I don't want us to move too quickly on this. Ron, do you have comments?
Well, we'll put, we'll put it on the agenda at minimum for further discussion. And we, if we have a proposal, we'll try and have a proposal for the council to consider. And, you know, if you're not comfortable with that proposal and you want to tweak it, then we'll, we'll address it on the thirteenth.
Okay. But, but yeah, I think that's, we really want to get something in the middle of April, so that way, before they get their invoice, people aren't like, oh my. That's the, that's the thing that we don't want to do, is surprises and people complain accordingly. Any other comments on the water? Okay, thank you very much. Let's move on then.
Just to give an update on the SRF Water Resource Restoration Sponsored Project Program, which is a multi, but essentially, with our wastewater treatment plant project, we're funding a portion of that project with SRF funds. And the state legislature in two thousand nine created some legislation for, to allow cities who are using the SRF funding for wastewater plant improvements, could borrow excess funds to do other water quality improvements to the watershed area for surface water problems, creek problems, things like that. And the, they would lower the interest rate on the main loan for the wastewater plant. That's enough so that you wouldn't be paying any excess. You'd be getting two projects funded for the price of one. And so we are submitting an application to participate in that, and working with Yegi Colby, and local NRCS, and State Revolving Fund people, and Department of Agriculture to, and I'm hoping, I'm planning on having that up for this Thursday, the twenty-seventh, application. And the council will consider a resolution authorizing us to submit that. Any questions on that?
I, I want to comment, that, that is a phenomenal thing. Ron, I appreciate you stepping up. In the middle of all this stuff, we're trying to benefit from getting a sewer plant and getting a local water project based upon our sewer plant. So thank you for doing that. It's, it's, that was one of the concerns I had, is did we have time to do it? And so thank you for putting forth the extra effort, because the community will benefit from that if we get it. from that if we get it and it's just like one of those no brainers, we have to do it. So thank you, Ron, for doing that.
One question I have, we do not have to decide on like where that money would go to at this point?
Right.
You'd have to, they have to be approved first with the application.
Yes, the application, people at SRF are encouraging us to put in an application with many, with a broad scope of what could be done if it was approved. So we've got many projects lumped into this, into this application and if we're approved, then we're going to have to narrow down.
We use it to credit water bills?
No. Okay, anything else on that? Next item is update on the EPA Buy American regulation, which we heard Tom Madden talking about this new EPA regulation for Buy American and it came, it was just poor timing, we're all in favor of buying American, but we're, you know, we were a few weeks away from doing a bid letting on our wastewater plant and it just kind of put us in a holding pattern now because the Iowa DNR and the EPA do not have guidance rules written up to tell us how to comply with that new EPA regulation. So they rolled it out without any guidance written up. So I've contacted, I decided to start contacting federal representatives, congressmen and senators to see if they could help us obtain a waiver, because there is a clause in there for waivers. So I contacted Steve King's office and have been dealing with their office and they're interested in helping and setting up a meeting with the DNR and Tom Madden to see if there's something that could be done. Senator Grassley spoke at Rotary last week, I attended that and I asked to meet with him about this issue. He gave me instructions to contact his representative, his staff in Washington DC. So 10 minutes after I got back to my office, I had made contact with this person and they contacted, within two hours, I was contacted by an SRF person in DC who, actually the person who's writing the guidance rules called me.
Wow.
So that was well worth going to Rotary that day. And I don't know if it's going to do any good, but at least I got to talk to the person and tell them our story on how this is just throwing a wrench into things. I don't know if it's going to help in the end, but anyway, I'm working that side of it, that angle.
Well, keep us informed because from a political point of view, we all want to Buy American, we all support our local economy, but we went in with budget numbers all ready to go and now we're slowing down our sewer plant and also, some of the questions are, it could cost us additional maybe 10 to 20% more based around future projects, but we got caught in no man's land where we had already estimated, raised the money and now we're going to our final bids and the people can't even fill out their bids because they don't know if they can even fit the Buy American program. So now we can't even go out to bid, which could put us another year behind or anything on our waste, which we know, the longer you wait, the more it's going to cost and it's going to affect our citizens. So if the citizens, if we know who to contact to talk about, I think more than just you calling our congressman and those type of things on, wait, a good idea has really cost the city, the citizens of Hampton. If we could get more of a publicity thing of write your congressman, this is affecting us, but we may have to move very quickly on it because if we miss our bid letting, that could put us into next year or cost us more money by waiting on the prime bidding season. So it's like, oh my.
Yeah, it's unfortunate.
So yes, please keep us updated on that, Ron, and anything we can do from a publicity or Facebook or anything on, you know, this is costing us money, government getting in the middle of it.
Update on dispatching services transfer, 2080 agreement discussions. The Mercy Management Commission was scheduled to meet last Thursday, it was canceled due to the weather. I have not heard that it's been rescheduled and so that's the update on that. Does anybody have any more thoughts or questions on?
I wasn't able to go next, last Thursday. I appointed Jim and he said, and we met with him, so if I'm not able to go, I'm trying to keep Jim informed. Anybody who has comments on this and from publicity and those type of things, we may, I mean, it's, there's some different ways of going, we may need to do more of an education thing. One of the straw polls was, is we are one of the few communities or councils that understand what decisions might be made. And I'm concerned that the other councils aren't getting the information in advance, that the mayors of the EMS may be voting on something that their council does not even know what they're voting on. And I just want to try to get that out in the publicity of this is a taxpayer issue that the mayors of the EMS commission is, it's all of the mayors of the Franklin County, one supervisor that'll be making a decision on taxes and they're making it without, you know, I just want to make sure our council and our community knows as an elected official, you know, that I'm voting on behalf of Hampton or my delegate of Jim's there, that, and this is a public meeting, that people as elected officials will be making decisions on behalf of their constituents that will cost them money and without getting information out in the public and everybody voting in, you know, upfront, and that's the parts that I'm concerned about is that the communities may not even know and if information isn't distributed before these meetings, it would be a terrible thing for people to try to make a decision on the fly without research. So that is a concern and the longer we don't get the information out there for us to consider, I can't see how we could ever vote on something that night without knowing the numbers and that stuff and that is a concern I have from the EMS side. Dick?
To clarify a little bit, correct me if I'm not right here, but we have a table established for the first two years, but the big question at the end here is what's going to happen after, or year three?
Correct.
As far as the financing.
Correct.
Correct.
And one of the parts, the concerns I have on that is, we agreed that we obligated and the council's aware of that the 40/60, that part of it for the first two years. But the third year, my understanding from the past mayor who sat on this commission and I assume the council, that we agreed that after it started, we wanted to see a look and see to extrapolate what the real costs were going to be after it got started as compared to trying to make a decision before it even started on how it should be paid and the weighting of it. And is that fair that everyone here on the council is in agreement that's what we agreed to? I wasn't here last year at this time. So if that's how we need to agree, then we have to vote. I think that the delegate from the city of Hampton needs to vote based around what we understand. And one of the concerns I have is, I had an email that said that they did not want to send out any advanced information anymore because it was being distributed and I have a major problem with that and I haven't responded to that email yet, that they didn't want to mail out in advance to the meetings of any information.
That's public knowledge, they should be reporting that information.
It's all bylaws and how you want to run your meetings. And so the point of it is, is I don't know how that works and.
Right, when you're talking about distribution of tax funds and how you're going to distribute it, that's public information.
Correct. And my concern is, is wanting, you know, the equipment's been ordered, things are already in place to start July 1. And I would not want to vote on behalf of the city of Hampton without my colleagues, other elected officials, knowing what the heck I'm voting on, but doesn't say I have to do that. So as the mayor of Hampton and the other mayors can vote that night based upon information that they are just placed in front of them. And we couldn't stop it. And that's my concern, is the city of Hampton only has one vote on that thing and we can't stop a vote if they bring it up or, I mean, I don't know how parliamentary procedure and how it's set up. But that is my concern, the next meeting, without advanced notice, they may force a vote and I would have a problem with that, but I'm only one of eight?
Eleven.
Eleven. We only have one eleventh of the vote. So we could say no, but the other 10 could vote, the majority would do it and whatever we're exposing our constituents and the city of Hampton residents to a tax, well, you know, I would want definitely my fellow council people to, or the council to know what I'm, you know, going in there. And I'd hope you would as be asking your, who you're representing, is this fair to the city of Hampton and to the taxpayers? So these are concerns, I'm just verbalizing to make you aware of it and I've talked, I've given this to Jim, that, expressed to him my concern. So I just want to make sure you're aware of it. I don't know when the next meeting is, but that did, it concerned me when I got this email a couple of days ago saying they would not be sending any information out in advance. And I know I shared some of the information I got with Ron, said, does this make sense? We had some questions on it, the next thing I know, I got an email saying they won't be sending out anymore. So I don't know if the other, if it was us or other community people that did it, but it was like, wow. So, and alls that's going to do is put it another month later if they don't send it in advance, because I wouldn't want to make a decision without advance, you know, to run it past, you know, Ron or the, you know, how it's going to affect or the city council or just run it up the flagpole. So that is a concern I have. Any other comments, questions? Thank you.
Sure. Okay. TCEP grant application update, Doug?
Thank you. I believe this Thursday, you're going to have before you a resolution, I think we discussed about. Just moving forward with this, we are moving forward because you kind of already decided that, but part of the grant application is, I need you all to work on a resolution for me and that way, that will be part of my application process. We have until August to do this, but I've also made contact with a, with an engineering firm, with CGA, just to get a proposal to see, because there will be some engineering involved. And then there's a lot of questions I have, is that engineering going to be paid for by the DOT? So I'm still working on a lot of things and I have a lot of emails out about, I'm still doing some corresponding and in the meanwhile, trying to work on frozen water lines and move snow, but, so we're working on these things, but I didn't want to, you know, kind of wherever I am, I don't have any grand news or anything other than you'll have a resolution coming up. So I appreciate that. If you have questions, let me know.
We were looking at both.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, both, both intersections.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments on that? Ken?
Really, no update on the library improvement project planning, other than we're waiting to hear back from the structural engineer in his report after he assessed the curb wall situation, so. Put it on the agenda, but was hoping I'd have something to give you.
Do you have any idea when we'll get that report?
Well, he said two weeks and it's been two weeks, so.
When you get here, when you get here.
I do also want to thank you, Ron, for going over there, meeting with them, taking the time to do it because it's a big, these are all impacts and project managing this, the city of Hampton will have to project manage this whole thing, even though whether we're funding or not.
And it's a hidden cost that's coming to light.
Yeah, it is, so, thanks, Ron, for doing that.
I was just going to say, I attended the last board of trustees meeting and if you haven't been over there to look at the wall, the curb wall, you need to go out there. Plus just to note, I think the library is on the national register too, so.
Kim didn't think it was.
I looked it up, it's listed.
It's on there.
So that might come into play, good, bad or indifferent, but it is on the register.
Okay. Did you tell Kim that?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Email.
Thanks, Jim. That's great, Jim. Thank you for doing that, attending on behalf of the city and that stuff. Any other public comments? I'm sorry, I didn't like ask, public comments on any of the city or why, and see if anybody's hands up or anything else. If anybody else has any other comments or questions, Ron, do you have anything else we could do?
No, I don't.
So we have a city council meeting Thursday, so thank everybody and again, tell a neighbor about the water and that, you know, try to get the information out and disseminating it. So we do have the privilege of having a local paper and a local radio station, so please encourage people to read about what's going on, so. Thank you all very much for attending and I think we're adjourned at 7:22.
Once they make their decision, they're probably doing things as people like that.